Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by, we've got several Riverdale High School students. Natalie Osteen, if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Eusenia Penya, Kendra Davy, Ariel Davy, and Jelica Davy. Correct? If y'all come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We could have a moment of silence, but before we do that, I would just like to make mention, if we could, just remember two of our employees, Bill Tolett and Donna Sandich. Both of them lost their fathers this last week, so if we could just remember them for a minute, okay?
Sir.
I'd like to welcome everybody tonight. This is our last meeting for the month of November. Tonight, we've got, we've got four special guests with us, and before I mention their names and everything, I'll tell you why they're, let me take a second just to tell you why they're special. Our board is currently applying for the Tennessee School Board Association's Award of Distinction Award for 2014 to 2016. To be recognized for the award, the board has to meet specific goals, criteria in there is a planning, policy, promotion, and board development. One of the criteria is to have a board meeting critiqued by a team of other board members, and we've got, we've got two other boards with us tonight, so I'd like to welcome them, and I'm just going to introduce them. Mr. Tim Stilens, he's from Franklin Special School District in Williamson County. Mr. Robert Blair, also from Franklin Special School District. Ms. Clejo Walker, from Franklin County, and Ms. Christine Hopkins, from Franklin County. So, I'd like to just welcome y'all and appreciate you participating in this. All right, approval agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Young, and a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
You might want to say for your visitors tonight, we have a work session last night that most of these were discussed.
Yes, as Mr. Odom just said, a lot of our time spent during the work sessions is going out, a lot of, going over a lot of this data that normally takes a lot of time, and we've got, we've left a couple of things on the agenda we didn't discuss last night that we felt important for the general public to hear that and allow our people to basically just do it one time, so. Tonight, we have one visitor, Ms. Lisa Moore. Welcome, Ms. Moore. I think you've been with us several times before, so you know the, you know the routine.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Lisa Moore from Christiana, Tennessee, and as I usually am here to talk about textbooks. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Odom, and board members, and Mr. Zago, for allowing us the opportunity that we had this afternoon, that Ms. Archer and I were able to actually have a half an hour to present to your teacher committee that are going to be reviewing the social studies textbooks. We appreciated the opportunity, and it does indeed show us that you care and that you are concerned about this subject, so thank you. I am concerned that the textbook process is still continuing to march on in spite of everything that was uncovered and that was brought up at the Senate hearings, and I just want to take a minute this evening, what's, are you timing me?
I'm ready.
Okay. Wanted to take a minute this evening and read to you a letter that I think is very, very important to have on the record. Some of you may have seen this, I don't know, but I would like for you to hear it. This is a letter that was written by Senator Dolores Gresham, who is the chairman of the Senate Education Committee, and by Senator Mike Bell, who is the chairman of the Senate Government Operations Committee. This letter was written to Chairman Fielding Ralston of the Tennessee State Board of Education following the Senate hearings. So again, keep in mind that this letter that I'm reading is from Dolores Gresham and Mike Bell to the Department of Education. And it reads as follows, it's dated November 6th. Chairman Ralston, on November 4th and 5th, the Senate Education Committee, along with invited members of the Senate Government Operations Committee, held hearings on the textbook review process and the role of the State Textbook Commission as currently structured by statute and rule. This meeting grew out of questions and issues that were raised at the Commission's June 19th sunset hearing conducted by a joint subcommittee of the GOC. The several hours of testimony brought to light and confirmed many of the same issues that were raised in June. The process design is flawed and corrections must be made. Troubling revelations came to light from both oral and written testimony which described inaccuracies, biases, and outright fabrications in many of the social studies textbooks reviewed in our current cycle. Over 500 pages of public comments detailing these concerns are available for review on the Department of Education's website. Astonishingly, notwithstanding the Commission's knowledge of major discrepancies in fact and presentation, the current list of proposed texts was nevertheless approved by the State Board of Education on October 25th. Putting these textbooks in the hands of our children would not be in their best interest and is completely unacceptable. The State Board of Education and the State Textbook Commission were created by the General Assembly. It's our responsibility to fix problems when we find them. There are, these are serious matters that require our attention and action in the coming months. In the meantime, we strongly encourage the board to reexamine the use of the approved list of textbooks, and we welcome your input and suggestions moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anybody have anything to comment right now? All right, we've got some special recognitions, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Odom, number eight.
Number eight in recognitions, our first one are TWSAA awards, going to list our new athletic director, Mr. Tim Tackett, if he would step forward and make these presentations for us this evening.
Thank you. One of the first responsibilities or pleasures I had was attending the TWSAA regional meeting a couple of weeks ago, and delighted to find in the, there that some of our people have been recognized. So I'll first invite Karen Green, if you'll step forward. Karen Green of Segal High School was named the AF Bridges Awards TWSAA Legislative District Four Female Coach of the Year. Mr. Bridgeman is here as well, from Segal High School, principal of the school, and congratulations as well. Let me share just a little bit about Ms. Green. Graduate of Trevecca High School, excuse me, Trevecca Nazarene College, her bachelor's degree, her master's from Middle Tennessee, where she coached for many years as well, and also coached at Segal Middle School. At Segal, she was there from 2003 to 2013 as the head softball coach with over 500 wins. Taught wellness, started the softball program from scratch, we know what that's like, some of it. Built in, built and are building softball facilities, was the department chairperson there, supervised student teachers, maintained eligibility of each player in track academic success, maintained the softball facilities, which is one of the real challenges any baseball or softball coach has, keeping that together. On-field coaching and game practice organization, and fundraised for the program to make it self-funding. Coaching accomplishments while at Segal, final four in 2009 after winning the district, region, and sectional championships, a sub-state finalist in 2006, 2006 to 2009 Region Four AAA Champions, 2004 and 2013 had the D&amp;J Player of the Year awards. As I mentioned, Coach Green also coached at Segal Middle School and Middle Tennessee State before coming to Segal High School. In 2013, Karen, if I may call her that, earned her Health Coach Certification from the McDonald Center for Obesity Prevention and Education and Villanova University College of Nursing. She is now the former Segal softball coach, as she is currently applying that degree as her own boss, as a certified health coach here in Murfreesboro. Congratulations, Coach Green. She has, she can show, she has the plaque or award that she was given for that, and I'm sure she's quite proud of that. And I was delighted when I was able to get her on the phone that she was willing to come and be recognized. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Also recognized was Blackman High School as one of the nine finalists of the AF Bridges Divisional Awards, and with us tonight is the athletic director, Gail Vick. And standing back. Scott, I'm losing your name.
Lawless.
And I've learned, if you don't write things down, people that you know very well, that's what I was looking for, Scott Lawless, athletic director here. And Scott, if you would, hold up the award. And I've written it up there, there it is. Approximately 350 member schools in TWSAA, Blackman High School was selected as one of the nine finalists for the AF Bridges Divisional Awards. The AF Bridges Award is named for the AF Bridges, for AF Bridges, the first executive secretary of TWSAA. His ideals of ethics, integrity, sportsmanship, and citizenship are four of the cornerstones at which the Athletic Association was established. Blackman High School was selected as the AF Bridges Division finalist for their efforts to promote these traits during the 2012-2013 school year. Schools given this recognition have, have had no reported unsportsmanlike conduct incidents during the previous school year, and have displayed an overall positive effort to teach, expect, and demand a positive atmosphere of sportsmanship at their particular contests. Congratulations to Blackman High School, Ms. Vick, the principal, dot A.D., and all your coaches, and your fans, and your students. It's truly a, an award that is representative of what you do at Blackman High School, and we all know it's a wonderful school. Congratulations. At that, let me, let me also say congratulations to Segal High School for their wonderful football season being eliminated by one of our area schools in the playoffs. Blackman High School who continued to play off, I know, Blackman High School who will take on Oakland High School Friday night. Oakland defeated Smyrna High School, one of our other schools in the playoff system that was there. And Eagle, we want to make sure we mention them, will be playing at home on Friday night as well, I think it's against Adamsville in their playoffs as they move on in the quarterfinals. Congratulations to all those schools. Again, congratulations, Coach Green, Blackman High School, and thank you for allowing us to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett.
Mr. Chairman, I can tell you why Blackman didn't have any unsportsmanlike conduct, because I would not want to have to go see Ms. Vick on Monday morning, so they're motivated, so.
Anybody else?
Congratulations. Very well done.
All right, Mr. Odom.
K.B., typically, as you can see, we honor and knight students, schools that receive awards, sometimes academic, sometimes athletic, but I'm privileged tonight to have the opportunity to announce some awards that our Board of Education actually received. And I'd like to read a statement, and then we'll show you the awards they picked up. The first one, there are many accomplished school boards in Tennessee, in fact, I think there's 136 school boards, which makes it particular honor that our board has been named the recipient of the 2013 School Board of the Year by the Tennessee School Boards Association. The award was announced at TSBA's annual conference on November 11th, 2013, and our board was selected from a total of 136 Tennessee school districts. To earn the award, our school board was judged in six areas: policy, long-range planning, promoting quality education, board development activities, communication, and being a board of distinction. The TSBA specifically cited the board's responsiveness to tremendous enrollment growth, consistently ranking among the highest-performing districts in the state, providing resources to teachers and other accomplishments. This board works incredibly hard to ensure our students have diverse opportunities, and they should be committed for the commitment and dedication. And would all of you, would the board members please stand, and let's look at this back. Mr. Hodge, stand up with them. This is the TSBA School Board of the Year Award presented to Rutherford County Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Odom. Please do not sit down, board, because we've got some others we want to recognize. The second award that we want to recognize this, this evening, has been earned by Wayne Blair, the board's vice chairman, immediate to the left of Mr. Hodge here. Mr. Blair has been elected to the Tennessee School Board Association's Board of Directors as treasurer. This is a tremendous honor, and we're pleased with having one of our own represent us at TSBA. Mr. Blair is only the second Rutherford County resident to be elected to the TSBA board. He is very active with TSBA and served on several committees and held other offices. Congratulations, Mr. Blair. I'm going to ask Gary Clardy to stand up with this one too, because we've got another couple of awards we did receive on that November the 11th day at the TSBA convention. The first one was Stewart's Creek High School, which opened in August of 2013, our new school this year, was also the recipient of two awards. The first one being the TSBA 2013 School of the Year for Excellence in Architectural Design by Binkley Garcia Architects. And this is the, the award they received for that design of Stewart's Creek High School. And again, if you have a chance to visit that school sometime, go take a look, about 350,000 square feet. We built the whole facility, the stadium area, parking lots, and everything, about 100, was it $111 a square foot? Actually, your building envelope is something like $87 to $89 a square foot, metal roofs, geothermal energy, that sort of thing, just extremely well-designed, so thank you, Mr. Clardy, thank you to Binkley Garcia and boards for pushing this forward. So again, it's for you, again, it's the school board for all of us, actually. And the second award, which actually was given, it was a People's Choice Award, so this was online sponsored also by the Tennessee School Boards Association. So this one was for the People's Choice Award for, actually goes again to Stewart's Creek High School in Rutherford County because it received the most votes for school design for this year. So again, congratulations. Congratulations also on Mr. Clardy for the, very good, it was a very good day in November at the Tennessee School Boards Association, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. Number nine, 2013 report card presentation.
Earlier, when I actually did a presentation about our data, at that time, I was telling you that I wanted to, the report card had not been released. We did that quite a while before that. So now that the report card's out, there's some other data to look at. I'll share with you a couple of pieces here. I'm not going to do the whole report card tonight, but this is, let me back up this minute, took this other one out. And for those that, for those that maybe watch us on television, and for other ones of you that would like to look at this, all of the Tennessee, let me slide this down. This happens to be that what came up there is the one for the state of Tennessee. By clicking up there on the schools, you can select, again, any district in the state of Tennessee, or any public school in the state of Tennessee. So there are tabs across the top of this, let me go back. As you see up here, there's profile, whoops, there's profile, value-added comparisons, college ready, college and career readiness tab, an accountability and education climate, and one for teachers. But that's information, and again, it's very visual, lots of graphics in it, not always the easiest to understand if you're not really with maybe some of the lingo that's used in education, but again, I encourage you to go there and look at that. The second thing. Well, Ms. Chris, what's your question? What I decided to do this evening is to kind of give you a summary, a summary of the report card, so you can, and some comments I would like to make as we go through this. I have, my purpose tonight is to let you see how basically we're doing academically, how we're doing financially comparing to others, and maybe point out to you and to our public that may be listening over TV or watching tonight about the efficiency and the effectiveness of Rutherford County schools, and I think some of that will kind of become apparent as I do this. I selected 25 other school districts to look at here. I selected all the school districts basically that surround us, selected every district in Tennessee that's larger than us. Rutherford County is now the sixth-largest school district in Tennessee, so selected those. Also selected some districts that would be somewhat similar to us, maybe in demographics and areas like Montgomery County and Putnam County. But just to kind of let you see, and so if you kind of look at the top of this as we go, as we go through this, across the top is Rutherford County, immediate beneath them, and each board member has a copy of this spreadsheet, and then 25 school districts. I added at the bottom, I think, which was kind of interesting, where were we in 2003? This is the 12-13 school year, so where was Rutherford County in 2003? So you'll get a chance to look at some, some growth and some things that have happened in Rutherford County over the last 10 years. Number one, looking at the first, of course, the first column is the school district, but the schools, we have 46 schools, that's really incorrect on the state report card, we had 45 schools at the time this was done, 46 of them was actually added this year. But 46 schools, in 2003, you had 36 schools, you've added 10 schools in, in the last 10 years, so that kind of lets you know something about the growth. The other thing that's kind of interesting, the total student population, 40,406, and in the last 10 years, you've added 10,998 students on that report card of 2003. And at that time, we had 29,408. You know, that number doesn't include this year, well, you have already grown another 1,100-plus students for 13-14, so that number on the report card will not show until next year. So you, you are over 41,000 now when you begin to look at that. Several things that I might mention about this as you kind of look at it, with our 46 schools, and, and we have large enrollments in most of those, but what's important about that, when you think about, there's a couple of things that I might point out to you, where we have 46 schools and 40,000 students. Again, if you were to look at Davidson County, they have 81,000 students, about double our size, they have about three times as many schools as you look at that. Sumner County that's around us, they also have 46 schools, but with 28,000 students. Now, what, what does that kind of say? And I'm not a proponent of really large schools, believe it or not, I'm not, but, but every time you open another school, that's another office staff, that's another administrative staff, that's another set of custodial staff, that's, that's another set of cafeteria staff that you face. So again, this board has been very efficient in designing schools and locating schools so that we get top efficiency out of that when you consider those costs. I'll have some numbers as we go down through some of the other. I'd like to spend a little bit of time, how has our enrollment and demographics changed over the last several years? Because I think that's significant also as you look at that. I guess one of the things that's changed most for Rutherford County, if you really look, this is white, and this would be African-American, you're Hispanic, as you look at that, and I didn't put the Asian population there, although we have several of those, but one of the largest changes for us has been in the Hispanic population from 3.5%, basically at that time, to going to 10.1% last year. So you've seen almost three times increase in that. Our enrollment of 2,265 English-language learner students is the third-largest English-language learner population in the state. So with that, with that in mind, it kind of, kind of lets you see, and the other two districts that are up here, they're larger than us, which is Metro Nashville and Memphis City, they have more students. So we also, and, and I have to say, since you're here from Franklin Special School District, you also have a very large, I just happen to, I think Franklin Special's on here, your, your population of Hispanics is something like 21%. And I looked at some of the scores, I actually told, I know Dr. Sharber and, and Dr. Snowden also, I actually made the comment to Dr. Snowden two, three weeks ago that I was impressed with some of their scores, especially for ELL and all, with the population that you have, so you're doing a great job doing that over there. I compliment, in fact, I, I think I'd like to meet with him, maybe steal some ideas, maybe we can share some strategies sometime, that helps. So looking again, the other increases, again, basically you can see through all of these, and you'll have time to look at that if you would like, we're, we're seeing somewhat of a demographic change in Rutherford County schools over the last 10 years, and that's probably going to continue. Another change that kind of shows up for us in addition to some of the ELL and all, is that students with disabilities is one, another one that we have, I'm going to skip that one right now and go to economically disadvantaged just a moment. Economically disadvantaged are basically your free and reduced students, you know, the percentage of that. In 2003, if we look down to economically disadvantaged, 25.1% of our students were free, reduced, launched, or economically disadvantaged. In the last 10 years, that's increased by 17%, we're now 42.1%. The significance of that very often is, many times in these homes, these students do not have as many resources as some other students. They haven't had the experiences, the travel experiences, other things that may happen. So I know you very well as a board, as we look at this, as we talk about programs that we can, can have in our schools to try to address this, and not just poverty training, but academic programs and all, to help these students catch up, because we take it very seriously. But again, as your numbers and economically disadvantaged increase, there tends to be a cost factor associated with that, in that it takes more resources to help these students, and that's just part of, part of the process that we do. Let me kind of show you something else. I want to talk just a moment here, talk about students with disabilities. I'm very proud of this. We had 11.4%, you can see everyone else is down through there, and there's some, Williamson County's just got 9.9, that's good. But we, in 2003, 14.4% of our population was certified special education, and that has dropped a full 3% to now 11.4%. Now, how does that happen, and what's involved with this, and what does that mean? I want, I want to say a little something about that if I could. Basically, when we, when we talk about that, 3% of our 40,000 students makes about 1,200 students. Now, the reason, one of the reasons that numbers is dropping is because of that professional learning community model that we're using in our schools. We're picking up on students that are deficit in skills and intervening much quicker. That's one of the, the purposes of, and you've heard the term response to intervention, or so the state's RTI squared that's coming up, starts July 1, we're piloting some of that this year in 10 schools, but it's to try to pick up students quicker, when they're behind, not wait until maybe it's far enough behind to qualify as special ed. But a 3% drop in special education students because of our interventions and what you've done to put things in place for that, translates with our 40,000 students to about 1,200 fewer students. A special ed teacher, if you stop and look at that, serves about 25 per teacher or something, and CDC is much less than that, so you're kind of averaging somewhere around 25. So when you, when you begin to look at that, how many teachers, that is 25 into the 1,200, and then you think about the teacher's salary and all that's associated with that, but us getting better at doing interventions, that's a cost saving of over $2.5 million a year. That's again, doing what's right and putting the people in place and doing that by being able to interact with our students more quickly. That's that saving, which then allows us to spend in another area to help address needs and all that's doing it, but a very significant financial picture to look at. As you look at another thing here, our teachers, as we go, teachers increased, again, from, we have 2757 according to the report card with 132 administrators. Our teachers have increased a total by 1,034 in those 10 years. Our administrators have gone up by 11 in the year. Now, one thing that's not on the report card, and incidentally, in the administrative list, that includes- that includes central office administrators, it actually even includes the director of schools. So I'm in that count too, when you count the 132 administrators. Well, I'm sure you're interested, I added this column. What is the ratio of administrators to a teacher in Rutherford County? Simply dividing this number into this number, it's 20.9 to 1. Now, Bradley County has 23 to 1, but no one else has that lower pupil teacher ratio. I can say with a lot of confidence, I don't think we have overemployed our number of administrators or our people that are helping. You may remember, it hasn't been too many years ago, that The Tennessean ran a story one Sunday that kind of compared the number of central office people to the population of the student population of the school districts. And Rutherford County had the lowest ratio of administrators, central office people, to the number of students we had of anywhere in middle Tennessee. So again, as your constituents ask you about your assistant principals in your buildings, your other people in the central office, you're again, one of the most efficient in the state at your administrators to that teacher ratio. Okay? Let's look, if we could, now at some of the academic things a little bit. And again, it's for you to see and study. So I'm not going to cover all of that tonight, I was able to cover some of it earlier. We have all fives in the Tennessee value-added system effect rating. And you're familiar with this, because teachers receive affect ratings from 1 to 5, schools receive an affect rating to 1 to 5, and also districts receive an affect rating 1 to 5. So for your composite, your literacy, what I'm talking about here is your composite, your literacy, your numeracy, and literacy and numeracy together. Rutherford County received all fives in that, so we're also proud of that. Another area is ACT. And again, in these areas, I cannot compare it to 2003, because at 2003, the only one taking the ACT was basically the students who were planning to go to college. And you remember, a few years ago, Tennessee is now requiring everyone to take the ACT in the juniors. So numbers are lower than they were at that time, but you're now testing the entire population. ACT is not where we want to be. There's some things that I think we could do there. But we still rank very well in comparison, even with our demographic changes, some of the other things that's going on. There's a really good program Williamson County is using. It costs $11 a student to do that, that helps students. They actually take an assessment, and it points them, a student can actually choose, you know, suppose I want my score to be 26 on my ACT. Then what deficit skills do I need to work on? And they typically will give it as a sophomore, because, or, you know, and then they wait a year when they take it. Well, actually give it as juniors, I guess, and then the next year, study it till they're seniors. Again, that's a $30,000, $40,000 program, but it's very effective. And it individualizes the instruction for the student as it's geared to ACT. So that's another piece. I guess another thing that we might take a look at, our graduation rate, which is the next column over, if we stop and take a look at that, grad rate is 91.9% again. And that's down a little bit, but it went down all over Tennessee, if you remember. Only two years ago, English-language learner students and special ed students were given five years to graduate. And so when that was removed, the fifth year for some of those at-risk students, then that brought everybody's percentage down. But we're really at 91.9, which again, I think is 5.6% above the state average there, through that. I think again, I'm not, again, we talked about some of this earlier, so I'm not going to talk a lot about many of these scores. You'll have time to sit and look at that, how does Rutherford County compare? And as I've said to you from the very beginning, I show you our good points, and I'll show you some points that we're not the best at. I stood up here a few years ago, really, really bothered by Algebra I, if y'all remember that, for two years in a row. But our people really stepped up, had a great game this last year in the Algebra I, as doing that. So that certainly is much better. The state keeps adding tests to that. This next year, we'll have a chemistry that'll be added to it, which will be a little bit different. Again, all of this data that I'm showing tonight is available on the state website. I've just collected it in a spreadsheet for you to look at. So any public or any person that would like to see that can certainly see the same thing. But again, that's our proficient and advanced percentages. English 3 was one of the new tests, and went down all over the state, just 39%, less than 40% for the whole state. That one was somewhat tough for everybody. U.S. history, again, we do not have new standards for U.S. history, so that tends to be quite high across the state. Another thing I might point out to you, the other is the TCAP/TVOS grading system, which has been in place for a number of years. And Rutherford County last year was A in math, B in reading, A in social studies, and a B in science. Something that really caught my eye, and I didn't think about it a lot till I printed this spreadsheet, look at every district that I have listed their score and value-added in math. Do you see all A's as you look at that? I'm going to tell you what I think it is. I think it links back to the NAEP and the growth that you saw, that award Tennessee got for being the fastest-growing state in the nation. I think it ties back to the Math Common Core. The rigor that the teachers are using in the classroom with these students across the state. This will be three years into Common Core math. Reading hasn't been that long. First year, they started with kindergarten first and second. But obviously, what that is, that is a grade based upon growth of the student. Remember, student by student, the year before and the year 13 test. And if you acquire enough growth in that, then on that ABC, A through F scale, then you can earn that A. And it's happening across the state. But again, I think that was verified somewhat with that NAEP result. I think that kind of confirms from a totally independent source, from our own testing people and all, that you are seeing that growth. So I'm, you know, very pleased to see that. Another thing that I'll kind of point out for you, our last year, according to state report card, we spent $8,110.68 per student. Now, if you look at that and compare to 2003, once again, we were spending $5,286 per student. But the next column is kind of one of the most interesting columns, the difference from the Tennessee average. We're not the lowest, but we are one of the very lowest. Rutherford County, again, the effectiveness of this school system and this school board at looking at our monies and applying them where they make a difference, shows up in this. You spend last year $1,282.32 less than the state average. Now, it doesn't take a lot of mathematics to think, to take that number and take 41,000 students we have this year. If you do a little math, it would take $51 million for us just to spend what the state average is. Now, and we'll have county commissioners listening tonight. And I'll have to say, our county commission is spending dollars, but we're having to spend so many dollars on constructing new schools now. And they have supported us royally. So hats off to the school board, the Rutherford County Commission, and everybody supporting education in Rutherford County. And again, I think we're doing a good job with the dollars that we have there. Another thing that is kind of interesting, you look at that, I did include from the state report card, the local, the federal, and the state monies. In 2003, 43% of our funding was local, and 5.7% was federal, and 51.2% was state. So over this last year or so, what you find is, our local is now 39.04, federal 5.79, and state 55.1. So we are basically relying to fund our student expenditures. We're relying more on outside resources, basically, over the last 10 years. That's gone up. Actually, and in dollars, of course, our number has gone up also, because if you look in 2003, we were $762.16 behind the state average. And of course, this year, it's 1282.32. So we're again, you know, some $520, basically more behind the state average than we were at that time. If we have 39%, and this is something you get asked quite often, I do. If 39% of our money and local monies are spent out of this total $8,000, that translates to $3,127 per student out of local monies to educate a student in Rutherford County schools. And let me, just doing a little bit more math, if I could here just a moment. One of the real challenges you face as a school board, and we face in preparing our budgets for next year, is this. With our high growth rate, the number of houses and the growth that we're seeing, it's not unusual at all for some of the new houses that the property taxes for the year is $800 to $1,000, right? So people very often say, well, growth will play for itself. Well, I'm simply saying, we're spending over $3,000 locally per student. And if the property tax on that house is $800 to $1,000, there's a discrepancy. Now, we really hope, and that's why our Chamber of Commerce and others sell this, it's very important to shop in Rutherford County because of sales tax and other things, because that's what begins to make up some of that difference from local. So it's very important that we do that. I think we want to think about that. So again, kind of in real numbers to look at, since 2003, we talk about, you talk about the numbers and that sort of thing, how much we've increased, how much it's expenditures since then. If you really boil it down to per student per day, we're spending $1.17 per student per day more than we did in 2003. So again, you as a board and working together, I honestly think is one of the most effective and efficient school systems anywhere. I don't think you can deny that, the statistics show that. And that's my compliments to you, and again, our county commission for funding that, and again, the staff that we have here. You know, none of this happens because we do it for education of students, my staff in the central office, our administrators in the building, and that teachers. All of those that are in that classroom each and every day are the reason we have the performance that we're having. These people are really working their heart out for the boys and girls of Rutherford County. Thank you, if anything, unless you've got any questions or comments.
I guess my comment would be that possibly the two most important initiatives that's being done each day is the collaboration and the intervention. And as long as we stay on that path and continue to do the other initiatives or methodology that you come up with as we face the challenges. It seems like we face new challenges every school year, especially as our student population becomes more and more diverse. 60-plus different languages, approaching 50% Title I status. And, but if we can stay on mark with the collaboration and intervention, I'd like to think that we would continue to improve. And I commend you, Mr. Odom, and the central office and administrators for staying on that pathway.
We, our administrators are dividing professional learning communities also. The K-5 meet together, and our 6-8 middle school meets together, and the high school meet together. We were at the middle school principals today, and the majority of the time in that meeting today was discussing academics and how they could do a better job of intervening. They're really good about sharing things. So one principal was having some growth, especially the others were just quizzing him to death, you know, about doing what you're doing. So, I mean, that's, working as a team and collaborating together is how you get better. And so that model is working for us, and our people are embracing it. It's just great to see that.
Mr. Odom?
Mastering the ACT is an increasingly popular topic at my house these days. And what Williamson County is doing there at $11 per student, I'm eager to see how quickly we could put something like that. It seems like that there really is something to be said for technique of taking that particular test as well as all of the aptitude. And there may be some opportunity there for us to really have a significant impact. What Williamson County has there with the average composite score of 23.4 is a nice goal for us to shoot at.
It is, I agree with you. And I think, again, what that, we teach ACT prep as a course in our high schools. What this does is personalizes for each student the skills that they need to score. Actually, the student or parents can pick what score they want to score. I mean, if you're at 126, but if you want a 30, you pick that, and then you take this assessment. And then it tells you what skills you need that you're going to have to master to attain that score that you may want to achieve. So there's some really good techniques out there doing that. Again, it's dollars and cents as we look at this, when you start thinking about it, where can you best apply the monies we have? I know the two school boards visiting us tonight, they have the same issues you do. You know, you've got X dollars, so where can we put those dollars to try to get the most gain from them? And it's a stroke.
It is. Once again, Mr. Odom, appreciate the good presentation. Number 10.
Number 10 is our old business. And that ties back to, you had a recent meeting with your proposed building program. If you remember that one, which has five-year plan for the proposed building program. Actually, what we look for more than anything for us is at least two years out. And county commission asks us, you know, to come up with a plan of multiple years so they can see that also. But again, growing at about 1,000 students a year, or like 1,100 this year, we're about a school per year, and that's the issue. You're adding on, I drove by that one middle today, was looking at that. They approved last week, the commission, the addition on to Smyrna primary. But as in your five-year building plan, we're going to have to have some additional sites and some additional schools to handle the growth that we're seeing now in Rutherford County. But, you know, we did not bring this as a motion, but whenever you as a board feel comfortable that you would like to make this or change it any way that you would like as your building program, then we'll proceed with that.
Can I assume that it is basically a living document at this point? And depending on the funding body, will determine how it lives? Would there be anything wrong with approving it tonight and just continuing to revisit it annually?
Well, I mean, you visit it every November. It's part of our policy that we visit our building program every November again. And, I mean, we will have to. And actually, the one we have tonight doesn't look exactly like the one we did a year ago, because you have to look and see where, of course, what, part of what Shane Morgan was showing you last night about where we have approved subdivisions and plats and that sort of thing, not only will it show up in our rezoning proposal maybe for middle schools, but it also applies to this too. So we have to constantly look at that, and it's our best guesstimate. But it gives us marching orders for this year for sure, and probably into next year.
I don't think the county commission, I don't think they meet in December, do they?
Most of your health and ed and budget, none of those meet in November. But they do start meeting in December, those committees do again.
Would it be appropriate for them to go ahead and have what we perceive?
Let the shock wear off, is that what you're trying to say?
I'm trying to be real discreet here. I think they would like to see what we have in mind and what we have planned. And I would think it'd be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, that we go ahead and move on this tonight.
I agree with that thought. And the only thing that I raise is, and somewhat on behalf of the chairman, the emphasis of as funds become available, and we discussed some specific things there with the monies coming back from the town of Smyrna and revenues there. But did the LHS, Smyrna High School bleacher renovation possibly be bumped forward? But other than that, are you making the motion? Because I'll second it. But other than that, are you making the motion or, because I'll second it.
I am making the motion.
And I'm seconding it.
Okay.
Does your motion include moving, I guess?
No, as is.
With, with leaving the bleachers where they're at?
Yeah.
Same year and?
We'll have to move them up as we see, you know, Mr. Sandvig and Mr. Clardy allow us to, to see that the, that the resources are available.
And it is certainly a need as, as the chairman witnessed personally at, at both of those facilities.
I'm, I'm good with it either way, but are you going to come up in, in the spring and surprise them? Is where I'm going at. If you're going to surprise them, why not surprise them now? But I'm open, whatever. I can go, I can go either way.
I believe the Laverne and Smyrna concession stand bleachers need to be moved up.
So are you making an amendment?
I'll make the amendment, move them up.
All right, I think I got the original motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Miss Holliday. You got that, Ms. Mark?
Yes, I do.
All right, Ms. Blankenship's got an amendment to include, uh, move the bleachers up to next year.
From sixteen to fifteen, I think, on your sheet. Is that what you're kind of looking at?
You got a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Young seconds.
I appreciate Ms. Blankenship's effort and I think it's outstanding. And I know that both of those communities and high schools will love to see that project fully completed. And so I'm, I'm eager to vote in support of that.
And it certainly is a need if you visit either one of those programs. As we're playing amongst ourselves within Rutherford County, there are thousands of fans and they're all cramped in together. And with the competitive nature that we, we tend to have here, it, it would be good to spread them out a little bit if we could, so.
All right, everybody's heard the motion and the amendment to it, correct? I guess, Ms. Mark, why don't you, why don't you call roll on this?
Okay. Uh, the amendment is Mrs. Blankenship, well, the motion is Mr. Blair, who's seconded by Mr. Holliday to approve the building program plan as yes and revisit annually. Mrs. Blanken, Ms. Blankenship, seconded by Mr. Young to amend the motion to move the Laverne High School, Smyrna High School bleachers from two thousand sixteen to two thousand fifteen.
If I understand what we're going to vote on?
We're, we're going to vote on each one.
Yeah. Hold on to the original motion first.
Amendment first.
Amendment, okay, I'm sure.
You want roll call? I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
Agree?
Motion is?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay. Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Motion passes as amended.
All right. Any other questions on this?
Mr. Hodge?
Yes, sir.
I would like to also, if we can go ahead and identify the next middle school or elementary school for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. I think we need to, we'll be focused on that. We're looking at our schools, most portfolios, that area's got the most portfolios.
Try to identify some areas. Mr. Carr, could you?
I didn't hear.
To go ahead and try to identify the areas where we need the next middle school to deal with. He's already been talking with some real estate people and other things, Shane Morgan. Of course, with now the, the county's GIS system, where he can kind of look at properties and what's developed and what's not. They, we're already looking at places to try to do that.
I know it's on our list, but I'd just like to see us get nailed down and drive it off the location. Give our county commission.
We, we continue to work on those and the reason we listed it's like that basically because it is kind of a moving target. And we're curious to see where the growth was this year, to get a pretty good idea of the area. And we're looking at section of land now in those areas. And once we get a little bit closer, we'll bring that forward.
What we just approved has a timeline that we would hear back in February as to possible locations. Do you feel comfortable with that?
I think we can, we can do that.
Okay, excellent.
A question that, Mr. Chairman, I meant to ask the other night. You know, we're having so many multifamily complexes spring up, not only in Murfreesboro, but in, in Smyrna and, and possibly, possibly Laverne too. What is the timeframe of, of the notification that, that that complex is going in and, and it's being built? It, it seems like it's almost overnight that that's occurring. That, that we'll have a, we'll have a school and then we'll have two complexes within throwing distance, apartment complexes.
Those things can go through planning for, the developer usually come in with a plan already. Engineer has put on site plan, it can usually be approved within six to eight months. And then depending on how aggressive the builders are, for instance, you saw how it was at Smyrna High School a year and two months, and it's built out and ready for occupancy. So, um, you know, until the building single resident market comes back, we're just going to see a bunch of that continue. And as they rent those things, the larger ones, for instance, like over at Blackman area, they're building sections, renting those, kind of getting them full and then going in. I think the banks require that more and more now. Be on solid financial ground to move over and start another section. So that actually draws that out some.
It's so difficult to plan when you have such a short window of construction with, you know, building all around our schools. And I think we, just in Smyrna, I believe we had, we've had in the last two years four different apartment complexes springing up. And I, I may have lost count in Murfreesboro, so that certainly continues to be problematic for us.
One of the problems that we face is, you know, poor finance from the county commission. Only near a school covering competition with seventy-two million dollar justice center that's coming down the pipe. So it's good to get this out early, it's good for them to see it, they've been seeing it. Those have actually been on there for several years now and move up as placeholders and they're becoming to a reality now. So it's very important that they see those and understand those while they're discussing the justice center and that finance.
Are you good, Ms. Young? Good with that? All right, number eleven.
Number eleven, eleven is local education agency LEA compliance report. Local education agencies are required to comply with all state education laws and state Board of Education rules. The annual LEA compliance report form, which is due on September fifteenth, should state deficiencies and a compliance plan for each deficiency. The commissioner of education will not grant approval to LEAs that are not in compliance with state education laws and rules that have no, have no Tennessee Department of Education approved plan for compliance. Every school in Rutherford County has reviewed the compliance report form, including state laws and regulations. The two thousand and thirteen LEA compliance report shows there are no deficiencies for Rutherford County. Recommend approval, a motion to submit the two thousand and thirteen LEA compliance report showing no deficiencies for Rutherford County.
So move.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Holliday. Any further discussion on this? I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, twelve A.
Number twelve A, we enter facilities, which is bid thirty twenty-nine, Smyrna Primary School addition renovation. Five bids were turned in on August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen for the Smyrna Primary School addition and renovation. Liberty Construction Company was the overall lowest and best bid. Recommend approval, motion to approve Liberty Construction Company for their overall lowest and best bid of two million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for the Smyrna Primary School addition and renovation.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on that?
Just that Dr. Vogel, I think, is still dancing, you know, just, she's so happy.
And we're certainly thankful again for the commissioners that are making it possible.
Nineteen to zero vote there today, so they really came through on this one.
Very much.
Anybody else? I want to favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is walking tracks for various schools. Several schools have requested and received previous concrete walking tracks through funds raised by Jenna Stitzl, our coordinated school health coordinator. There are still many schools that Jenna is working on to fund these walking tracks. Among these schools are Christiana Elementary, John Coleman Elementary, Kittrel Elementary, Last Cassis Elementary, Rock Vale Elementary, Royal Walton Elementary, Smyrna Primary, Stewartsbury Elementary, Therman Francis Arts Academy, and Walter Hill Elementary. Letters requesting permissions from principals of these schools and sketches of proposed track locations prepared by the engineering and construction department are presented. Jenna plans to construct these tracks as the funds become available with supervision from the engineering and construction department. Individual bids will be presented to the board and future consent agendas for approval. Recommend approval, motion to approve construction of previous concrete walking tracks at Christiana Elementary, John Coleman Elementary, Kittrel Elementary, Last Cassis Elementary, Rock Vale Elementary, Royal Walton Elementary, Smyrna Primary, Stewartsbury Elementary, Therman Francis Arts Academy, and Walter Hill Elementary schools as presented.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion on this? I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thirteen.
Thirteen is new and revised policies. And of course, we are now seeking first reading on this from the policy committee, these are recommendations. Adoption of policy three point two zero eight, facilities planning. The purpose of this adoption is the district required by federal regulations to implement a policy regarding facilities management and asbestos plant management. The changes incorporate those into your policy. Policy four point six oh six, graduation activities. Purpose of this revision is district is, are required by state regulations to have a policy regarding recognition for students who graduate with distinction and state honors. We did do this for students last year, but it wasn't in our policy, so this, this brings our policy in line. Policy one point four oh four, appeals and appearances before the board. Purpose of the revision to limit visitor presentations to three minutes and prohibit visitors from making personal attacks against board members or school system personnel. The policy one point eight oh three, the tobacco-free schools. The purpose of this revision is to add electronic cigarettes and vaporizers to the list of prohibited items. Policy one point seven oh four, charter schools. The purpose of this revision is to add the following requirements to the application process. That the charter school would have compliance with Tennessee Department of Education application requirements, timely filing, budget submitted on approved forms, grade structure equivalent to structure of the system. Students must reside within Rutherford County. Candidate status for Southern Association accreditation must be received within the first year of operation for grades nine through twelve schools. Nine through twelve schools must meet system graduation requirements and provide a curriculum to meet the University of Tennessee and the Tennessee Board of Regents and NCAA requirements for Division One schools. Compliance with all state and federal rules regarding nutrition, transportation, bids and purchases, and special education. Of course, our goal was that any charter school would at least match what we're doing as a district. And policy six point seven oh two, student clubs and organizations. Purpose of this revision, distinguish between curricular and non-curricular clubs and provide rules for posting materials in school buildings. So our motion recommend approval, motion to approve the adoption of policy three point two zero eight and revisions to policies four point six oh six, one point four oh four, one point eight oh three, one point seven oh four, and six point seven oh two on first reading as recommended by the policy committee.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Blankenship and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this?
Each of these are individual policies and they have gone through our policy committee, which includes the input of teachers, administrators, and members of the community. They're each individually important and, and could be considered individually. But as a board member, and I think the board collectively, we're comfortable to approve these collectively this evening. So I'm, I'm ready to vote.
I don't think, I thought anybody, anybody else? I want to favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fourteen.
Fourteen, you have a student discipline appeal this evening. The board has been requested to review the October thirty-first, two thousand thirteen decision of the disciplinary hearing authority, DHA, to uphold the amendment of a student from Oakland High School to Daniel McKeal Alternative School. This review is pursuant to the provisions of policy six point three one A. The policy states that the board shall review the report, the record of the report, and shall, number one, you may affirm the decision of the disciplinary hearing authority, or you may modify the decision to a lesser penalty, or grant a second hearing, which would be before the board, or you may deny your request for a board hearing.
Move to affirm the decision of the DHA.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fifteen.
Item number fifteen is for information, only no action requested. The transportation department was budgeted nine additional buses for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. We put on eight buses through October. This brings us to a total fleet of two hundred and thirty-six buses. We have exhausted the first priority, second priority, and third priority list for future contractors. We are currently at number twenty-three out of sixty-three contractors on the fourth priority list. Rutherford County buses are traveling a total of sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty-four miles per day, which equals two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two miles per month, or two million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty miles per year. This year, we are utilizing the star database to track students who ride a bus. This requires each school to identify those students and input their bus information. This is a change from previous years and the transportation department, along with the attendance department, are working with the schools to get accurate numbers. We are currently showing twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight students are assigned to buses and are being transported each day. At the end of the two thousand twelve, thirteen school year, we should, we're showing transporting twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight students. We have also transported one hundred and three atlas students, which is academic time leads to achieving students, which are homeless students for those that might be listening. Rutherford County Schools Assistance Program for Families in Transition through the end of October compared to ninety-one in two thousand and twelve. We've had nine accidents with one injury so far this year compared to five in two thousand and twelve with one injury. We've had nine accidents with one injury so far this year compared to five in two thousand and twelve with one injury and ten in two thousand and eleven with fifteen injuries. All buses are equipped with video surveillance, which is used by schools, the transportation department, and bus drivers to identify individuals and actions involving misconduct. We have pulled one hundred and six videos from buses through the month of October.
I know we asked, uh, last night, we asked Mrs. Snell, so, you know, a few questions in regards to this, anybody else have any further questions?
I think probably for our viewing, viewing audience, that that twenty thousand, eight fifty-eight this year and twenty-five thousand at the end of last year is probably confusing, just that that's a moving number as, as the year progresses, and, and I think you may have mentioned that last night, didn't you, Mr. Odom?
Uh, that number's not correct. Again, the, the state would allow us, in the past, you can kind of take the bus drivers' counts and stuff, but now you have to make sure it's entered on the student management system, bus number and all. We were actually up since then to over twenty-three thousand. We're closer, uh, Mr. Snell, day before yesterday, yesterday, I guess it was, sent out another email to every principal that shows the bus numbers from each school, the numbers transported, and we even tagged some of those that appear to be off from what bus drivers are independently reporting. So it, it's a process of getting your data aligned to make sure all this is entered in the system that the state pulls from EIS, Education Information System, to do our, our funding for average daily transportage. So we're in the process of trying to get all of that aligned and corrected. And Ms. Snell's working very hard on that, so hopefully, uh, shortly, we'll have this aligned. Of course, with people moving all the time, it is a constantly a moving target.
Anybody else? All right, number sixteen, uh, annual policy, uh, manual review. That's your homework, I guess, for the next couple, next couple of months, so. If you want some reading, uh, just take a look at all that, if you have any changes you want to make, like I said, get with Ms. McLeod, and we'll discuss it in February. Uh, number seventeen, update on insurance.
Okay, and, and again, um, Mr. Sandig and Ms. Barnes did attend the insurance meeting this week. Some other things here that will, that are changes, this information for you, because it will eventually avoid, uh, cause us to have some votes and probably some policy decisions. Number one is the flexible spending accounts. Our plan will, our plan will be modified to allow up to five hundred dollars of an employee's flexible spending account to be carried over to the next calendar year. The Internal Revenue Service just announced this change in the regulation. Previously, employees could carry up to one thousand dollars through March fifteenth of the next calendar year. The maximum that an employer can put on his or her flexible spending account is twenty-five hundred dollars per year. There's a technical correction for retiree medical insurance for employees with seven years or less of service with Rutherford County as of December thirty-first, two thousand and ten. The retiree insurance plan approved in two thousand and ten refers to a three hundred or five hundred dollar per month payment to a health savings account when they have retired. Regulations do not allow us to use health savings accounts with our current plan. The new language now refers to either a three hundred or a five hundred dollar per month taxable stipend instead of a health savings account for these two groups of employees. For pre-sixty-five retirees, options two and three were approved with Ms. Barnes and Mr. Sandig abstaining from the vote. The, they both expressed their concern that either more information is needed before the committee meeting or more time is needed for consideration when major issues come before the committee. The committee we're talking about here is the county insurance committee. Option one has not recommended to the committee and would have kept, uh, pre-sixty-five as they are. Option two would blend the pre-sixty-five retirees with the active population and keeps the fifty percent county contribution that, that was approved back in two thousand and ten. And option three allows pre-sixty-five retirees to opt for a five hundred dollar per month taxable allowance to purchase their own medical insurance. When they turn sixty-five, they have thirty days in which they can go back to the county insurance plan for post-sixty-five retirees. Options two and three will be presented to the commission's budget committee on December the fifth, two thousand and thirteen. And, and they're both here, they talk, you talked with them last night, some, at your working session, but if you have additional questions or thought of others, they're here to be glad to answer your questions, I think.
I would have a comment that I'm, I'm pleased that, um, those two options are available, and I think they're both beneficial to our, to our people that have served us so well. And I did call Ms., Ms. Stinson and, and we did discuss the, uh, availability of information to our representatives, uh, on the committee, because this board certainly, uh, would like to have input and advise those representatives, uh, as far as, uh, direction from the board, but, uh, you know, they have, they have some issues, I guess, getting some of their, uh, information out, and, and it is quite technical, but, uh, I, I did urge her to, uh, at least communicate as best, or as well as they can, to, uh, to allow us to be in the process since we would like to give, uh, Ms. Barnes and Mr. Sandig some direction from this board. But overall, I'm pleased that they adopted our recommendation, because this, uh, this blending, uh, recommendation came from this board and, and I understand that they couldn't do it last year because they really didn't have enough time to do their due diligence. But basically, Ms. Stinson and her staff polled, uh, the different, uh, education districts across the state and, and most of them apparently, or a good portion of them, uh, blend as we recommended. So, uh, I feel good that we made a, uh, made a recommendation that, last year, that, that came to fruition this year.
Anybody else? All right. Eighteen, general discussion. Everybody quiet, everybody was quiet last night, let's see.
Well, I wasn't here last night, so. I got a couple of things I'd like to, uh, share with everybody. It's last Saturday night, I was, uh, honored to go to McAllister's to, uh, to eat, but also to help out a family, a, a child, a young man named Devin Cairo, who's the Oakland, uh, baseball pitcher, who's in stage four of cancer. I was so honored to see the entire baseball team, the boys clean tables, uh, deliver food to tables, just do anything. And I was so honored, uh, proud to see, uh, all the children, uh, the kids from the school that were just, you know, overwhelming to see them hanging out, helping out, and, uh, helping this family as, uh, they, they battle. Uh, second thing I'd like to mention, totally different, is that the county commission is beginning to, uh, take applications for our empty seat over there for our, uh, school, new school board members. So, uh, for all those out there, I'd like to ask them if they have any, uh, if they want to be a school board member, uh, put in an application and go through the process. I think, uh, applications need to be in by December second, and, uh, the full county commission in December will select the new school board member for us. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Nipper, or Ms. Holliday.
I'm appreciative of, uh, Ms. Moore continuing to keep us advised about the textbook issue. I think it's a very important issue, and, uh, it's something that we will see, uh, the, the state legislature weigh in on, and I think that that's, uh, clear from the letter that she shared today from, from the committee chairs. And, uh, I look forward to that and, and certainly have already opened discussion and will continue discussion with the elected officials here in Rutherford County, uh, as, as they have influence on that. At the same time, uh, doing a little personal research on that. So, uh, thank you again for keeping us advised about that. Uh, the policies that we put through, uh, are very reflective of the, uh, community, and, uh, I appreciate the input that we've received, and there's more work to be done on those. We continue to hear feedback from the community, and, uh, I'm always interested in, in receiving that. I met with some nice people last night, uh, about some of those policies, and, uh, really appreciate their input and the influence that it is as we continue to move forward.
Anybody else?
Just welcome to our brothers and sister boards members, board members here from, from other districts. So, uh, hopefully you, uh, sharpened those pencils and, uh, and gave us some good marks. Hope we graded out well.
Your team will be attending the third of four sessions tomorrow for the, of course, state mandated differentiated pay plan. So the team is, uh, tomorrow is another session for that, and of course, you have a meeting set up to discuss this and adopt the plan in December, but we'll be picking up some additional information tomorrow, hopefully for that plan.
Also ongoing, uh, uh, the evaluation for our director of schools and, uh, all the fellow board members, uh, got in our information about that and look forward to completing that process. It was, it was a pleasure to, uh, to get to evaluate, uh, such excellence.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'll just make a couple announcements, uh, just as, I guess, a general public reminder. Friday night, we've got, uh, the number two team in the state playing the number five team in the state, so I guess somebody will go, go by the way Saturday night. Also, we've got Eagle, I believe, they're playing at home?
Yes, sir.
Eagle playing at home, so, uh, just to throw those two items out there, and then, uh, and lastly, I hope, uh, I hope that everybody has a, a happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, I guess we'll see some, everybody back here in December. Anything else? We're adjourned.